Jackie, congratulations on your election to the Board of Selectmen.
Thanks, Steve.
And I think everyone here appreciated your contributions over the past few years.
Thank you.
And we wish you good luck as a selectman.
Thanks.
On TV as a target. Unlike here, everybody is really nice. Evening, Kevin. And Gavin is not here, but Gavin is, would be his last meeting if he were here. He's had several opportunities to contribute and he's always been prepared to step in. And I hope we'll see him in some capacity volunteering for the town in the future. The next meeting will be the start of a new term. We will be welcoming Ann Erickson, who's taking Jackie's place. And the new alternates will be Shannon Knoll and Diane Madigan. Neither of them are here, but both of them have served on various boards and commissions for the town, so I think they'll be really good members or good alternates. Looking forward to that. I'd like a, we've got a full complement of regular members, so we don't need to appoint any alternates. I would like to have a motion to add consideration of the September 16th minutes to the agenda. So moved?
Second.
Second by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So let's move to the approval of the minutes. Let's do the September 16th. Appreciate it. Sotera worked on these for us, and we appreciate the work she did. It was 10 pages of minutes.
Oh, my goodness.
And Mike has found, yeah, line 41, it says Ms. Lang. I think that should be Ms. Byssell. That's an everlasting correction. Pops up as Ms. Lang. But anyway, it was you, right?
Yes.
Okay. Did anyone see any other? I mean, it's 10 pages, so I can't believe we didn't get something in there, but I haven't seen any. I scanned through them myself. I have a motion to accept them as corrected.
So moved.
Moved by Kevin. Second by Donna. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes carry six-nothing. Okay. Next set of minutes is last October 21st meeting.
Dave, I read those minutes and I thought they were satisfactory as they were submitted, so I don't have any changes to recommend. Suggest that we adopt them as they were submitted.
Second. Second by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They're adopted as submitted. Thank you very much. Okay. The next order of business is a public hearing of Adam Bellward. Mr. Secretary, could you read that?
All right. Application 1944 of Adam Bellward, owner for special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C dot one of the Simsbury zoning regulations to allow a home occupation cottage food operation on the property located at 23 Riverside Road. Assessors map H-12, block 108, lot 003, zone R-40.
Thanks, Kevin. Is Adam here? Hi. Would you care to explain to us what your application consists of?
So basically, kind of the point of the application is, from my understanding, the state of Connecticut passed last year the food operator license, which allows you to produce non-potentially hazardous foods out of your home to a certain extent that you can sell to the public. My background, I'm a graduate of the Culinary Institute of America in Hyde Park. From there, I went on to the International Culinary Center for the baking pastry program there down in Manhattan. So I've kind of had this passion for food for some time that I've been pursuing ever since I left the military in 2011. While I was there at those two institutions, I sort of fell in love with wine, as there's a rigorous formal training program there. And I went on to become a certified sommelier for the Court of Master Sommeliers, and now I sell wine professionally, but still kind of have that, you know, drive to produce food and, you know, sell food and kind of experiment with things. And this is a good opportunity, I think, to sort of like make some different products and see how I could potentially bloom into a business outside of the food operators license.
Good. Questions in the commission? Bruce?
Could you just expand a little on your marketing strategy? How are you going to sell the products?
So the marketing strategy would be extremely social media driven, you know, just putting out there kind of, you know, stuff that I'm doing as you start to attain followers, putting out flyers with some other kind of organizations that, you know, I'm aware of and in town, like gyms and stuff. It's not something that would be like an aggressive push, like, you know, it would just be kind of like, hey, you got a party coming up, you need some cupcakes made or some sort of like, you know, fancy breads that you need made at maybe places here in town or in the area that don't necessarily know how to do or are currently producing, stuff like that. So it'd be extremely social media driven would be the marketing for that, for sure.
Well, I think you're the third applicant under this regulation since it was established by the state of Connecticut, and I wish you well.
I do.
It's sort of a leap of faith in a sense, but your capital investment isn't huge, as I understand it.
What's that?
The capital investment, because you're going to use your own kitchen.
Right, 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 yeah.
So you don't have to put a lot of money in, but you have to put energy and time and enthusiasm and some knowledge.
But, you know, if you like doing it, it's really, you know, it's your work. It's kind of a hobby.
Donna, anybody else have some, any questions? Kevin?
So what, part of this application is you're supposed to actually outline in the house where you're going to be storing food.
So the first step, from my understanding, is the zoning. And then, once the zoning is approved, then everything goes to the state to potentially get the license. So they'll be the ones who kind of specify, you know, how products need to be made, what products can be made. Like I said earlier, no, so my background and the training that I have is pretty extensive in Serve Safe, I'm not sure if you're familiar or not, but it's the nationwide organization that sort of handles, you know, what food is safe and how you handle and all of that for consumer protection. So underneath the cottage food operator license, you cannot produce any potentially hazardous food. So that would be like, you know, meats, cooked vegetables, things like that, things that have to be held in certain temperatures. So those things kind of go out the window. So it kind of puts you in a category of, you know, breads, fresh baked breads, cakes, chocolates, roasting coffee beans, if that's something that somebody wants to do, and things that are non-potentially hazardous, so.
And you're primarily going to be working in your kitchen, or are you going to be in the garage for storage?
Everything will be in the kitchen, yeah, for sure. Is that satisfying?
Well, so there's no storage of flour anywhere but in the kitchen?
It would all be in the kitchen. And, you know, like I said, these, from my understanding, you can't produce more than, you know, $25,000 worth of actual revenue from your operation. So it's not like, you know, I'm going to have pallets of flour and sugar and stuff like that where I'm pumping out, you know, like a bakery would. It's more, like I said, novelty. Somebody says, hey, I'm having a birthday party, can you do this for me? Or, hey, we're doing a wedding, you know, kind of on a budget, can you bake a cake for me? Stuff kind of like that.
$5,000 cupcakes and things like that.
How are you planning to do distribution? Are you going to be making deliveries? You're going to have customers coming to you?
No, yes. So I would be doing all the deliveries myself. From my understanding, already for licensing, you can't really have people come in, you can't be accepting deliveries. So any product that I'd be buying, I would, you know, going out to Restaurant Depot or whatever local sources that I find that are producing a product that I feel is quality enough to work with, I would be going out and keep getting that, bringing it in, and delivering the product to whoever the buyer is, to their actual residence.
But you're working a full-time job?
I do work a full-time job now, yes. And also still a member of the National Guard as well.
Thank you for your service.
A lot of things I'm okay.
So you're going to do this on weekends, or?
You know, in my off time, you know. When you, so my background's in the restaurant, the restaurant world, like I said, you know, after eight years of the military, going into restaurants, you know, you're kind of used to this sort of, you know, 12 to 16-hour workday, and then all of a sudden you get a job selling wine. I'm not going to lie, it's kind of a luxurious job now, you know, I wear a tie and I take wine and I work eight hours a day, and it kind of feels like I work half-days now. So to go home and say, yeah, I got to make some cakes and breads, it's like, you know, it's nothing.
Good. This is being televised, you know.
Right.
That's great.
Any other comments or questions? Does anybody in the public like to speak to this application?
I get to do it. Go ahead.
Come up and please state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Aldridge, and I live at 21 Riverside Road. And I found out about it because I saw the sign. And I'm here with some other neighbors, and we just have some concerns because Riverside Road is really busy. And with people, I mean, I know you say that you're not going to have anybody here, but it brings in lots of concerns. Septic tank issues with more baking and flour and those kind of things are things that we need to think of. And garbage and trash, we have tons of bears. So those are some of my concerns.
You're against the?
I'm against it.
Okay.
My name is Bill Savage of the 20 Riverside Road. Adam, thank you for your service. One quick question. Have you spoken to other residents on the road? I'm not here a lot, so I can't count myself.
No, I have not spoken to anybody on the road.
Okay, so you haven't had the chance to actually meet some of the folks on the road?
Excuse me. Point of order. Please address the commission with your questions.
I apologize. So I'd like to find out if Adam, if Mr. Bellward has taken time to actually introduce himself to the residents on the road, to explain what he's planning to do on the road. And then I have the same question that this Aldridge had, which would be how he's planning to deal with wastewater discharge from his business, because we are, all the homes on this road do not have sewage. So it's just an answer.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else care to speak? Adam, I think an opportunity for you to respond to that specific question would be useful.
Yeah, so I think obviously the concerns are valid. I can see where, you know, you're not the impression that, you know, there's going to be like kind of this big operation that's going to be going on there. I guess my response to that would be, number one, I apologize, I wasn't kind of aware that it would be, you know, that much concern of it for not coming around and introducing myself and kind of saying kind of what's going on. But I guess, you know, kind of like I said, this isn't, you know, me saying this is going to be my, a secondary source of income. This is me pursuing a passion for food and, you know, making products and being able to, you know, get that sort of gratification from people saying, you know, we like what you make, we like what you do, your craft is awesome. If it was ever to turn into something like that, where I would be producing anything on any scale, I would then have to make a decision to move to a professional brick-and-mortar location. But like I said, right now, you know, I sell wine full-time, I spend, you know, at least one weekend a month, still contributing to my military service. So, you know, by no means, and I know this is me saying this, you have to kind of take this at face value, but I would say, to be rest assured, there's not going to all of a sudden be, you know, me loading up my truck with loaves and loaves of bread and bringing them all over Simsbury and Avon and these areas. So that would, to answer that question, if you're concerned with traffic. In terms of garbage, you know, we keep our garbage in the garage. We're very aware of the bear issue. I have a video from a bear in the backyard just the other day. I feel like my apple tree is probably bringing a lot more bears than the garbage does, we keep that in the garage. And I, like I said, I don't see a whole lot of, you know, wastewater issues, because, you know, it's going to be one of those things like, hey, we saw your thing, can you, we're having a brunch party, can you make us some croissants? Sure. We're having a birthday party, can you make us a cake? Sure. It's not like, you know, hey, put your orders in now through this website, I'm producing dozens and dozens of bread. And the license through the state does state how much you can actually produce. So it's not like I can create like a corporation or this like sort of empire here. You can only make so much, and it is all, it all does have to be documented for tax purposes as well, so hopefully that would give you some reassurance there.
Okay, thank you. You have your own septic system. You're not a common septic system.
Correct. I have my septic system, yes.
Okay, so you're responsible for your own.
Correct.
Okay. Any other?
Well, just let me offer the observation that the state brochure, the multi-page brochure that describes the business, does recommend that the owner, before starting production, have the water tested that they're using and also have the septic system evaluated to make sure that isn't going to be a problem.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just have, um...
Please come up.
This little public can be a part of this, too.
Sure. Yeah, I just have a concern that also, because we live in a floodplain, I noticed that the application said it wasn't. And so in the spring, it's so flat, everything floods, so I'm just really concerned with more waste and everything.
Okay.
Because we're right by the Farmington River.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Comments or commission?
No. I just was thinking Mike might have some comments.
Can she just touch on the flood?
No, it's okay. Mike, do you have any comments for us in public audience?
You have my staff report, as kind of commission indicated. This is the second application you've had under this new license from the state. One thing I just ask is that when you go to deliver, deliver it the application, just remember to review Article 7, Section C-10 of the regs, going over the 10 points and standards for granting a special exception. This is very similar to that application that was on Hampton, was up on Hampton Circle. The other thing about the floodplain, this actual property is not located in the floodplain. It's actually, it's in the 500-year floodplain, but not the 100-year regulatory area, just to clarify the record on that. And with the comments about septic well, consumer protection will require that the well is tested, just like the other application as part of his permitting process with the state. He, it would be in his best interest to have the septic system, you know, have someone probably pump it, take a look at it, make sure it's functioning properly. But the Farmington Valley Health District, at least with the, this application, last application, have indicated to us, because the cottage food licensing program is really regulated by consumer protection, they do not regulate this. So it would just be a matter of make sure your septic system is working at this time. I'm not aware of it, having a failing septic system. We usually get not notified when there are failing septic systems in the area, so. And then my staff report had, should the commission, after reviewing Article 7, Section C-10, determine is where you're in favor of granting approval, four conditions of approval for the special exception.
Okay, well, we'll deal with that when we, after we close the public hearing.
After you deliver it.
Yep. How do you close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing on application 1944.
I'll second it.
Second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have 35 days to close. We did close it in record time. That's, leads us to the next thing, which is consideration of the application itself. And Mike has given us a summary of the staff report. Any discussion?
Yeah, we need to go down item by item on that.
Yes. Do we have a motion to approve the application, and then we can discuss it?
Well, yeah, the motion is rather lengthy. Discuss it first.
Whatever you'd like. It's just, normally if you have the motion on the table, then you can discuss the elements of the motion.
In case we had, something comes up that we want to add to it.
You can always amend it. Whatever you want. You're the secretary.
Yeah, sure. Whatever I want. All right, well, then I have moved to approve application 1944 of Adam Bellward, owner for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C dot one of the Simsbury zoning regulations to allow a home occupation cottage food operation of the property located at 23 Riverside Road. Special exception is subject to the following conditions. One, an administrative zoning permit is required for business. Two, for issuance of administrative zoning permit, applicant is to provide the following documents. A, a copy of the application for DCP cottage food license. Three, as per application, there will be no exterior evidence of business at the residence. And four, expansion of the business requires approval from the zoning commission.
I'll second.
Second by Donna. Okay, now, discussion. I think we have to consider the special exception items.
Right. There's eight of them.
Eight of them.
I just have one question for Mike first, if that's okay.
Sure.
The septic is, typically septic's based on number of people in a household, like bedrooms. So the concern would be number of people primarily for a septic issue.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, I'm done.
Okay. The first one is?
The need for proposed use in the proposed location. It's always a difficult one.
Yes.
No, that one's easy. It's the owner's house, and he's applied for the permit. He can't be the home baker unless he has his home to use. There's no other location that would satisfy this regulation.
The regulation, yeah.
It's why the state...
Permits it.
Permits it in the first place.
Yep.
Trying to help people get a start.
Okay. Be the existing and future character of their neighborhood in which the use is to be located. It doesn't appear that there'd actually be any change there.
There shouldn't be, per this regulation.
Our motion says there won't be.
No signage, no traffic.
And the state regulation and the state says that too, right?
Okay. C, the location and main accessory buildings in relationship to one another.
There are none.
Well, that doesn't change.
Those don't apply? Yeah.
Okay. D, the height and bulk of buildings is in relation to other structures in the vicinity. Again, that doesn't change. E, traffic circulation within the site, amount, location, and access to parking, traffic load for possible circulation problems on existing streets.
Doesn't apply.
And that doesn't increase.
It's going to increase a little bit, right? The homeowner is going to be going out on missions to get more flour or whatever, or supplies, and then make deliveries, but...
The size of the vehicle, I mean, it's not going to be like...
Yeah, it's not a box truck or...
Box trucks are going in and out.
Can't ask now, I should have, I guess, but...
Well, he said he was going to do it himself.
In his personal vehicle, but his personal vehicle could have been a box truck, so there's a missed opportunity there.
But then it's already a box truck.
That's, that's a good point.
Okay. F, availability of water to the site, inadequate disposal of sewage and storm waters. That's the item that was brought up by the public.
And the state will take care of when they get to the...
State makes them check those things.
Yeah.
It's a limited, if you're not running a $100,000-a-year business, it's at most $25,000. That's only five cupcakes.
And he's doing, and he's doing the work himself, so he's not bringing in staff, which would add people, which would be the primary concern or driver, I would think.
For waste.
For waste.
G, location and type of display signs and lighting, loading zone and landscaping. So none of that applies.
No, none of those are allowed.
And H, safeguards protect adjacent property and the neighborhood in general from detriment. It may be subjected to baking smells.
Yeah.
Never been, never been against baking smells.
Nope.
All right, so I would say that we don't have issue with any of the standards for an extra exception.
Okay.
So it meets all the needs?
Yep. Any other comments?
Not on the standards.
Anything?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six-nothing. Okay. You're approved.
Thank you all for...
With all those conditions?
With all the conditions, yes. The motion he read had those conditions in it. The next application is Mr. Donahue for McLean Affiliates.
TJ Donahue for the applicant, the McLean Affiliates. We're here before, I think, the third or fourth time on this application. McLean is endeavoring to fill out its campus facility in the town with a 54-unit apartment building and other amenities on the ground floor. We've been to, to all the commissions, we were here for a change to enable the type of structure that the building. We've been to the design review board a couple of times, and most recently, we were there. And they gave us some good input, and we did change our plan a little bit. So I have Mike Doherty from Mylona Booth tonight to go through the changes that we make in response to some of the observations that design review board made. They were helpful and constructive. And we're here for the approval of the site plan amendment tonight. And we'll answer any questions that you have. We had, the record reflects the approvals of the inland water courses commission for our permits. It reflects the designer review board's unanimous approval of our design. And it includes a staff report dated October 21st, 2019, of which we agree with everything on it. And we also compliment staff on working with this for, we've been at it for six months, but I think we have a really good plan and a really good project for the town of Simsbury. His staff report includes a attachment A, which is a sample motion, and there's not a single thing that we would change in that. We accept the motion as it's written. And we'll answer any questions for you, and Mike Doherty will take a minute to show you what we changed because of the design review board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm waiting. I'm Mike Doherty. I'm a licensed landscape architect in the state of Connecticut in New York with Mylona Booth out of Chesapeake, Connecticut. As TJ has indicated...
It's getting worse.
It's getting worse. It's getting sleeveless.
I set you up.
No problem. So, maybe a little hard to read from this distance, but hopefully you've had a chance to review the plans in previous meetings. So when we went back to the design review board, they basically were focused in on a couple of things at the rear of the building, which faces the east side or the golf course side of...
TJ, could you turn that this way a little?
You bet.
Thank you.
Maybe.
Yeah. Hope it doesn't fall.
So the primary concern was that the east facade of the building, which is technically the rear of the building, so you enter in on the west side, but this is the side that faces the golf course itself, and there's a fairly large grade change between the exterior of the building and the golf course itself. So it's about eight to 10 feet, yes, you can see here on the rendering. So originally, this was one of the more, first renderings that we had, and you could see here this retaining wall holding up this upper terrace. Basically, behind that wall is the pardon garage. So the living space is up here, and this is an open terrace that overlooks the golf course, that we're very excited about the views and the interaction of the community with the golf course itself. When the design review board saw this image, and rightfully so, they were a bit concerned about the amount of foundation that was exposed to this view. So the last round that we went through, which is part of this board here, we took a look at the landscaping, as well as the configuration of the sidewalks leading up to this foundation wall and up to the patio itself. we took a look at the landscaping, as well as the configuration of the sidewalks leading up to this foundation wall and up to the patio itself, and reevaluated the species and the height of those plants so that we can conceal more of that foundation wall. So we now have a mix of plantings along this entire facade, starting here and running the entire length of it around the corner, starting about eight feet tall, going down to very low perennials in the front. So we have a, a mix of natives and ornamentals and a, and a nice kind of residential feel to the planting so that it really ties into the rest of McLean's property and starts to hide this facade, but also allows the residents to have that beautiful view over to the golf course itself. So you can see on the board, you know, a mix of flowering natives, shrubs, small trees, some lower, lower plantings of perennials and smaller shrubs. Should give a nice diversity to the area and just an aesthetic feeling to it.
And soften the wall.
Yeah, really, we really want to soften the wall. So on the board you can see, we did a small section here indicating back, middle, and front planting. So it has a sweeping effect from low to high, so it really does conceal a good amount of that wall.
Is the wall just a concrete wall?
No, it's actually a veneer, it's going to be a very nice wall. But, you know, they, they had some concern because of the tent foot difference in grade. So you will still get pieces of a wall popping through the vegetation, because we didn't want to, you know, completely block it off. But it would still have a high aesthetic value to it. Yeah, there's a corset you can see of that. So it'll be a little bit more uniform in the planting height, but still get a nice variation where it's, you know, not a, a, you know, row of arborvitae.
If I can, part of what the design review board did for us was they identified that we should fully functionally use the lawn and that we should show this door, which has the access to this facility through the elevators within the garage. The sidewalks were joined at their, at their suggestion, and there's better detail in the stairs also. Texture is added to the outside of that, so it's going to look like a differentiated surface wall.
So that was primarily the change that we made for the last meeting.
So comment on what TJ was saying, what was discussed at DRB was the fact that you have someone who's handicapped. How do they get from the patio to the lawn? And that was the door that, that TJ was, they would be using the elevators down to the garage level and using, take us to the next one.
This side.
The, the door that he pointed to on that previous plan sheet to get out to the lawn. Because the concern was, he created this great area in his lawn, and yet if you're in a wheelchair or you're... How do you get there? Because you have to go down these eleven-foot stairs with a landing. So that this was identified as a way, and that's why also they, they said, you know, connecting the sidewalks also makes sense. There's a mechanical door that's to the south of that, it's south of this, uh, right there where the pointer is. They've asked that to blend it in, because it's not one of the primary doors, so it's not a confusion. Because it opens up into a mechanical room, it doesn't go to the elevators. Other than that, design review, they, they reviewed all of the materials proposed for the building design. And as TJ indicated, their main concern was, back to it, the potential blankness of, of some of these walls and the need for putting texture on, on those walls, which the applicant as, addressing their, their comments and revised the plans to demonstrate that. I apologize, this is a, this rendering was from prior to the DRB meeting, so obviously their comments aren't incorporating it. The other was on the other end of the rear of the building, and I don't have it on this slide. They wanted to look at the landscaping, that's where Tom Daly brought more information on the, the species, the heights, you know, the quantities of plants that will go down to break up sort of that view of the wall. So you're not just looking at eleven-foot wall.
Yeah, previously the landscaping stopped around here, but the, this goes towards the loading dock. So we extended it the full, the full facade of this, this whole rear of the building.
And really, you, you would only see this as you're going to the fifth tee?
Sixth.
Sixth tee, from the fifth, the fifth green to the sixth tee at the country club. This will not be viewed from a public road, so you gotta be playing golf on the golf course to see this view.
Questions, comments? Are we happy with it? Are we ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I think that was a good call and really nice details.
Last opportunity.
I know. Better hit it out of the park, TJ.
Go ahead.
No, Mike, questions were with the landscaping. For TJ, you had said that you got approvals from inland wetlands since we met. And then in our documents, it looks like you also, the fire marshal gave approval, the town engineer. That was all, these were comments that we had made too. So I just wanted to make sure all of that was done.
Absolutely.
And WPCA?
Got it.
There's a requirement, your motion that we go for a full staff meeting before instructions complete, but that's pretty standard.
That's just where we left off, though. It's all of those things hadn't been done.
Jack, have you just called? Yeah, since our last meeting, the town engineer has given, granted approval. Fire marshal has no objections to this. The police have reviewed it from traffic perspective, they were okay with the application of chief of police, the local traffic authority. WPCA has reviewed it as the number of bedrooms for the connection, make sure that, you know, we have the capacity in, in our, in the pipes. It works, so they're okay with it. So every, internally, every department is reviewed and signed off on this development, along with, as TJ indicated, the other various standees commissions that were required.
Great.
So you ready to make a motion?
Sure. Is everybody else ready?
I, I just have one more quick question. Could you remind us, TJ, in the length of that building, are there elevators at the two ends plus somewhere in the middle? So there's three elevator sets or...
Dave, do I have to read the whole thing? It's like the longest motion of my career.
Perfect.
I know, whatever's there is what's required, but I was just trying to remember. I thought it might be a top of mind kind of thing.
Well, you see the main lobby, elevators.
Does this help you go to the basement? Two X.
Yeah, the two X.
I'm sorry, I don't want to, I can't tell you. Absolutely. That's why Tom Daly's supposed to...
Well, I'm looking at the plans myself.
It looks like there's two elevators. One right here.
I just want to tuck it away as a piece of reference. For the next time we see a building on there. Three hundred feet long or whatever this is.
The current facility operates with one, with one set of two. Thank you.
Are you okay, Bruce?
All set.
You're okay. Donna, any questions?
No, I'm good.
Kevin? How's it going, Mr. Chairman? Okay. You're on.
Would you like me to make a motion?
Please.
I would like to make a motion to approve application nineteen dash forty-six of TJ Donahue Jr., applicant McLean Affiliates Inc. Owner for a site plan amendment to construct a fifty-four unit residential building and apartment amenities at the McLean campus on the property located at eighty-five and ninety-five Firetown Road and seventy-five Break Pond Road. The site plan amendment approval is subject to the following conditions. One, an administrative, administrative zoning permit is required for the construction of the new facility. Two, prior to issuance of the building permit, the applicant is required to provide the following. A, a copy of the permit from OSTAW if required. B, a copy of CTDEP water, stormwater permit if required. C, two milers of she LS to be signed by the chairman. One is to be filed on the land records with Simsbury Town Clerk. The second is for the engineering department. D is a posting of a fifteen thousand dollar cash bond with the town of Simsbury for erosion and sediment control. Number three, a pre-construction meeting is required with town staff prior to the start of site work. Number four, erosion and sediment control measures are to be inspected and reviewed, oops, lost my page, by town staff after installation. Number five, conditions of approval from inland wetlands permits are incorporated into this approval. Number six, for issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant is to provide the following. A, a final ASBIL drawings prepared by a licensed surveyor. ASBIL drawings are to be Class A two T two. All site improvements are to be illustrated, such as building location, horizontal and vertical, location of utilities, parking layout, stormwater feature locations, horizontal and vertical, and other pertinent site development information illustrated on the approved site plan. B, certification from the design engineer that stormwater features were installed per the plan and function as intended. C, documentation that the connection fee has been paid to WPCA. And finally, seven, the commission authorizes staff to approve minor changes to the approved plan, such as landscaping, grading, stormwater management, or similar site features. Requests for changes are to be made in writing to staff prior to the implementation in the field.
I'll second that.
That's what I heard, could you do it again?
You're done. You're done.
Drink. Have there any discussions? Comments? Everybody is okay? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six, nothing. Thank you, TJ.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. McLean Affiliates is very pleased with the help that we had from town staff and from all of you.
That's great to hear.
Good to know. Okay, is there any correspondence, Mike?
Actually, you have a new application.
Oh, yeah. Well, that, we've got to set a...
So this is a, a, an accessory dwelling unit pursuant to, accessory dwelling unit pursuant to new regs. So it's a site plan approval. The agent is here to present the application. Staff had two outstanding questions for the applicant and maybe discuss this information.
How you doing?
Good. How are you?
The homeowner was going in here, but this, this whole situation is... Her mother is an elderly woman and she's coming in with her house. The actual situation, I hear she had some concerns. Anyways. I have a... Go ahead.
Just take your name for the...
Oh, sorry. Tyler Wilson. I have a notarized letter signed by the homeowner that specifies some items that I think were of concern. This is a notarized statement that she intends to reside at the property so we own or occupy. It's, she's also certifying that the, the use of this apartment will only be for an in-law apartment, not, not to be rented for financial gain. She's certifying that she will not separate the utilities and designate a parking spot, although we didn't ask for that in the, in the garage for the in-law apartment. So she went above and beyond, I was just looking for an affidavit saying that it would be owner occupied, but otherwise, perfect.
Is this a, a walkout?
So the grade, yes, there is, there is an exterior door in the back.
And a window?
And a window.
Is there a requirement for accessible?
For a bedroom down there, worst cases, the building official would ask for a window well to go in if, if it wasn't...
Big enough?
Accessible, yeah.
But there is a door that you can walk out.
Right. I just didn't know whether they required, okay.
So, yeah, so this, this whole situation started with the elderly mother moving to move in. Her previous residential situation has collapsed and she needs to move in with her mother, her daughter, I'm sorry. So I think the reason that, that this became an issue with zoning is because of the kitchenette that they wanted to put down there. The elderly mother is, she's Japanese, she is, she loves cooking, it's one of her passions. And so that's what made this kitchenette so important. The building department, you know, had no issue with the bathroom and bedroom. There was no issues with anything from, from a building code standpoint. So this is all because of the kitchenette, so.
So if there wasn't a kitchen down here, it would just be a bathroom and bedroom in the basement. Obviously, that's what triggered it as being accessory dwelling unit. So he's provided a floor plan, it's five hundred and ninety square feet, which you allow up to six hundred or twenty-five percent of the gross floor area. It's just under the twenty-five percent at this house, so it meets the square footage requirements for the regulations. He's provided the affidavit for owner occupied. The only question staff had about this that's outstanding is, this is part of a planned unit development, whether the homeowners association triggers any approvals. And the only reason why we're asking this question is, I don't want them to be in a situation where the commission gives an approval, they sign up for a building permit, or they, they apply for a building permit and the homeowners association now says, you can't get this building permit, and they spent all this time and money. That's, that's the only thing that I have as a, as a concern, which is kind of outside your zoning regs, but I just want to avoid an undue issue with this. I know that, in talking with Tyler, he said that the homeowner discussed this and said that she believes she's okay with the bylaws. This is not an issue. Just hoping maybe she had something, an email or something to document that.
She sent me, let's see. She says, ah, the only stipulation the bylaws call out is that only single families plus one other family member can live in the house, which is the case. So that's, that's her, that's, she's saying that that's what the bylaws are saying, that single families plus one other family member is what the association...
So they're more restrictive than our...
Correct.
Here's her affidavit complies with that restriction.
Yeah, based on the fact she's, she's not intending to, to, what do you call, rent this out for financial gain, it's a family member that's going in.
But she could remove the kitchenette and rent the room out, right?
Oh, go on, brother.
Did she not in a letter say that she might remove the kitchen if her mother wasn't there anymore?
She'd be willing to absolutely...
Did she put that in her letter or in...
She did, but she's suggesting that's a concession to the town.
Yeah, I was wondering if it's in her affidavit.
She's willing to do anything to get this approved, but...
I thought it was in there.
Well, no, it had to be in the affidavit that he has.
No, some towns...
But once it's approved as an, as an accessory dwelling, it doesn't matter if the kitchen comes out or not, it's still approved.
Right.
So, I mean, it's kind of...
It would no longer be an accessory dwelling.
It would still be approved as one.
Yeah.
You have this site plan that was approved, that unlike, so this, this gets into the difference between the special exception and site plan. Previous regs, if it was a special exception, runs with the land, it's forever. Site plan, if you remove the kitchen, the use is abandoned. We start all over, and whatever the new regs are, let's say that's five years from now, whatever those regs are at the time, if they want to reestablish the use, they'd have to reapply and come through the commission, because the use would have been abandoned. That's what the difference moving this to with site plan approval, it's a huge change. So if she's, and I'm looking at the letter right now, if she's putting the concession on the table that the kitchenette would be removed.
I thought I read that.
Yeah, in her letter, but not, not the one that he had today.
Not in the notarization, but I know she'd be willing to...
She's offering that as a concession that she would take it out, and she's also offering to, for our information, but, you know, it's not signed in blood, that she has no intention of renting this to anybody else. It's not a for-profit thing. And she doesn't tell us she's going to collect rent from her mother or mother-in-law, so, you know, the...
And there's not an issue with the extra bedroom, bathroom as far as...
As far as like septic?
Yeah.
It's not on septic? So there, there's no septic?
You're on public water, public sewer, so...
So like, no issue?
Yeah.
It would be a, it would be a billing issue, really, not, not so much that the inability to connect.
It's use, it's increased use.
Their, their bill's going to go up, like, let's say, just going to use some rent number fifty dollars.
I think I have another issue that need... I think, I have another issue that needs more attention, anyway, that we get to accessory dwelling units in Simsbury through our regulations. In Article Five, Paragraph G, it's only one sentence. It says, "Accessee dwelling units are permitted in any residential zone, subject to the requirements of Article Seven." And then in Article Seven, you start to read some of the requirements. But the fact is, this, that residence doesn't fall in a residential zone, it falls in a PUD. And PUD is not a residential zone, because commercial, industrial, all sorts of things can be in a PUD.
No, that's a residential zone, it's a residential design district.
It's not a PAD.
Accessory, the, I, I came across it because I was looking for the water source, so I looked at the Simsbury Assessors database, and the database says it's a PUD.
Don't...
And this says it's something like that, too, so, I don't know, but it's not a residential unit, I mean, it's not a residential zone, and that's the critical issue.
It's the residential design district, it's a residential...
It's a residential zone.
No, it isn't. It's a PUD. Look at the access, the tax assessors database, it's labeled as a PUD, as well as all the other properties in there, and the same thing as Powder Forest. All the properties in Powder Forest are categorized as PUDs. They can put commercial development in there, industrial development...
Plan unit development, it's a, it's a, it's a tax classification.
No, they're not, because they can be a combination. Once it's approved as a PUD, I mean, there's master planning and that kind of stuff, but they're supposed to be for a variety of zoning uses. They're not restricted to residential, and they're not categorized as residential. When you look at ours, list of zones, we have several residential districts, and then you get down to other categories. And while PUD doesn't seem to be on our list, PAD was. I'm not sure what happened to PUD, but the tax assessor still thinks that's a PUD. And my point is, it might be some different things, but it's not, it's not a residential zone, and maybe we should fix that. I'm in favor of supporting the, you know, our commitment to diversity of housing opportunities and that sort of thing, and I'm sympathetic to their situation, but I don't see that you can just sort of walk around this. A PUD is not a residential zone, it's as simple as that.
We have a difference between you and staff, staff says it is.
Well, we, we have, we have to, you know, do what we think is right.
I think we can get the neighbor to say it's a residential...
To staff's point, that was...
It is now.
The tax assessors assessment of it. What's the...
It's based on the tax assessors' record. Well, they get zoning information from the zoning office, the planning department.
No, don't go, don't ever go by the tax assessment cards and the, for the zoning designation. Usually, go by your map, this, so I'll pull up right now, sorry. I'll look at, um, yeah, the, the PUD that's, that, like I said, that it's classified as is a zoning, I mean, a, a tax designation, so that's the property right from my mouse. See it? Sorry.
It's on the left, it's a mix of apartments in the front and then individual, single family homes in the back.
Yeah, so the actual, that's the house right there.
Mm-hmm.
It's in the residential design district, which is a residential zoning district, which only residential, you know, either, like, apartment development or single-family kind of what's, excuse me, set up towards the west end of Old Canal Way is allowed. There's no other, no commercial uses that are allowed in there. It's not a pad, so like, the Magenta Parcell, it's there, that's Cumberland Farms, that is a tan area development, that mixed uses are allowed there. There's no commercial uses that are allowed in that tan area. That's a strictly a residential zoning district.
Is a, do we still have that in the zoning reg that, that this came under? And does it require, if you have a change of use like this, is it a change to the PUD?
I think it's the reason why our regulations don't anticipate that we get caught trying to interpret the regulation, the HOA regulations of these different places that we're busy these days, you know, occasionally approving, but whether it's the center zone here, the center zone, center code, that's not a residential district. So, when somebody who lives in the center here comes in for accessory dwelling, we're going to have the same issue, right?
Okay, but in this case...
So, the residential design district is actually a defunct district, it's not in your code anymore. You, you only have the village cluster zone and the cluster zone, so Powder Forest, like Carson Way, that's a cluster zone. It's part of a, it's part of a residential design district years ago, but it re-zoned as a cluster. This is one of those outstanding residential design districts that are remaining.
Does that, does that term even exist in our zoning regulations, the residential design district?
That's what I'm looking right now, whether, I, I remember we had this discussion as staff on what to do, because we also have the old apartment zone, too, yeah, you can see it here, the, the sky blue parcel, it's Talke, Talke Woods, that's another one. I don't know if we have a... No, you know what, we did not. Because we don't have standards to it, this is, like I said, like the apartment zone, that's a defunct zoning regulation, an old zoning regulation, but like I said, it's a, it's a residential zone. So, I mean, the technical, the use would be, the use is allowed at this area.
But that's not based on, you can't find that in our regulations, that's based on your interpretation of past experience and other regulations and that sort of, okay.
But it's clearly residential.
It's not clear to me. It might be clear to you. No.
It's a residential area, although the use is a residential.
Yeah, but when it was approved, it was approved as a PUD, and I would say, I'd, I'd suggest, seriously, that never changed. Now, we may have overlooked the need to change it, but the fact is, it hasn't changed, it's still a PUD, and commercial stuff, whoever, you know, the HOA control is, could propose the introduction of other uses down there, within the context of PUD, just like PAD, you know, the variety of things that can go into a PUD.
Well, since it doesn't exist in our regs, we don't, we don't know that.
It wasn't zoned as a PUD.
Yes, it was.
It said...
Well, when I say PUD, I mean planned unit development, which is not your planned area development, that's a, that's a tax, it's a taxing term.
But the PUD was around before the term PAD was recognized in the town of Simsbury in 2011.
Correct.
This building was done in 85?
Right, but, but as I said, this was approved in 1979, started the first approval in the eighties, we just went through this one. Remember how Mr. Evans on the corner of Old Canal Way came in about the designation of this parcel? Yeah, this was approved as a residential development under that old, it is the residential design district, because there are a few other places in town that this was, that this zone still exists, like Governor's Landing in, Governor's Landing in Terrifield, Hostel Crossing...
Built around the same time.
Yeah, they're, they're all, all either similar to Old Canal Place, the, the western portion of development, where it was kind of, I want to, you know, it was single-family houses with exclusive use areas, or denser development, but it still was a residential zoning district.
Better?
I, I can hear it plainly. I'm not in agreement, and it doesn't persuade me, but you're all, you know, I'm only one, one person here.
I don't have a problem with the concept of the apartment.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, don't we have the standards to go through on this one as well?
No, because it's not...
Because it's a site plan.
It's a site plan amendment.
Yeah.
So, they did, they demonstrated compliance to the regulations, unlike the, when you use that deal, this is a special exception, yeah, then you have to go through Article Seven, C10.
Yeah, that's a special exception.
Then, this is just, they've demonstrated, you know, design standards such as square footage, the parking requirements, there's, there's no physical expansion of the structure, there's no utility issues, they had the affidavit, um, so, I'll see. Conform to the other, to life safety. There's one parking space that's provided, it's in the garage, you can't see it, so they're going to be using the garage, so it meets I and J. The only thing, maybe, is the relevant recommendations contained in the most recent plan of concept, adopted plan of constitution development, but really, that's the diversity of housing stock.
Anyway, so we don't have that?
Right, but we do have, conform to that.
We do. Conform to the regulations. Mike?
I was comforted by the homeowners association's rules that restrict the occupants, because usually when we're talking about these projects, you know, there's not a restriction like that in place to, to insulate it from becoming a rental property down the road, so.
I agree.
Do we have a motion for this?
You have staff...
Yeah, I moved to approve application 1947 of Tyler Wilson's agent, Rena?
Rena.
Rena Pereira?
Pereira.
Owner for a site plan amendment to construct an in-law apartment in the basement of the single-family dwelling on the property located at 125 Old Canal Way. The site plan approval is subject to the following conditions: One, an administrative zoning permit is required for the construction of accessory dwelling unit; Two, approval is for an accessory dwelling unit that has a total of 590 square feet; Increases of the footprint of the accessory dwelling unit must be approved by the zoning commission.
I'll second it.
Second by Mike Doyle. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose?
One.
Five to one. Who carries?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, now, we can jump ahead to the correspondence.
Is it safe?
Did you say there was correspondence, Mike?
You don't have correspondence in scene there? Well, you have one under number three, we can talk about afterwards. What you have in front of you is the consolidated work of Robin and me for the past year on our regulations. That is the, your new regulations. I went through to look for cross-references, I know there's probably a few that I missed, but that has all the changes that were discussed in your various meetings in August with staff and with the commission. Robin is kind of keeping a running track as we met. She updated the proposals each section, I put the new sections in, in each area. If the commission wants to take a look at that, rather, I, I've just handed to you as, here's the, here's a completed document. We're down just under 60 pages by consolidation and cutting back on repetition of existing regs, so, and, and honestly, that probably, the document you have in front of you, I've still made it to format a few pages, there's stuff that's kind of floating around, and I want to wrap up, just to make sure there's no missing cross-references, still saying XXX co-sections, but everything should be there and ready to go.
I would like people to take a look at that this week or until our next meeting, and then bring any questions or comments to the meeting, and we can determine whether or not we're ready for public hearing.
And I will, when we win it, this is filed for a, for a public hearing, we still have all the tracks of stuff that's been deleted and stuff that's been added, so when we, when an application is filed for the sake of the public, we'll have both of those documents, along with the new regs, so someone could say, what's in it, what's, what's in it now that wasn't in it before, or what's in the old regs that's not in the new regs, so it'll be a very easy conversation with the public, once this goes to a public hearing, because, I mean, and I really got to thank Robin for keeping, for keeping track of that stuff, so.
We appreciate that.
And we, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, we're to hold our questions until the next meeting? We can't, can we...
You can ask a question now.
Can we advise staff so that they have research, so that we can keep moving forward, or do we hold them all?
Oh, no, 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 I would say if you have questions, then email them to Mike.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, making sure I understand the...
Just so we get rules of the game. We need to get a review of this in place.
And, so I've also shared this document with Bob DiCrescenzo, so I'm kind of speeding up that process to get a legal review completed while we're doing our review, so that there's no, and like I said, there's no outstanding issues when this goes to a public hearing, or at least from our end, our work is completed, we're just really looking at public input.
There are a lot of pages here, and I think we...
It's going to take time.
Take the time to make sure we go through it.
I got to pick on Mike. Page 11, just, just because Bruce brought it up, the first item here is accessory structures.
Yeah.
It says, "In all residential comma, accessory structures." So, I'm not sure what, is that residential zones, residential, residents?
Residential areas.
Something's missing there, in all residential.
That isn't what it says now, what it says now is residential zone.
Right, but now it just says residential, but, I mean, it should be...
That's not much help.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, yeah, that's, that's also my regulation that I wrote, so I'll take that down there.
So, there is, and then, so when we go down to, then go down to attached accessory dwelling units, I think Bruce does make a good point here, that, you know, we certainly would want to allow them within the center district, and I just want to make sure that we don't have anything in here that would exclude that. It doesn't say in this one that, that it has to be in a residential zone, although it's in the...
Well, it's kind of in the title there.
Yeah, no, it would be the, this only applies to the residential zones.
Oh.
And plus, your center, your center zone, we have the separate regulations, so no one in the center could claim, I'm going to apply for an attached accessory dwelling unit pursuant to Section 34A of the regulations. They would have to, they'd be subject to the center code.
Are we incorporating the center code in this, or it's going to stay...
No, we keep that as a standalone document. That's also the thing, if you combine all these codes, like, one thing, if you recall during our conversations, we took out all the definitions that are specific to the center code, because some of them conflict with your zoning regulations, and, you know, there's at least one court case that's floating out there that's a result of the conflict between the two codes definitions. You want to keep these, these documents very separate from each other, plus, I mean, one is a Euclidean zoning code that's dividing by uses, while the others is, or the other two are form-based codes, which function completely different animals.
Well, then I would suggest that after we complete this, we need to take a look at the center, because there was a couple of things that came up that we wanted to do, you know, signage issue.
Yep, always signage.
Yeah, that was our, our intention was, the next thing to do was, I think, what did we say, we said center code next, or pad?
Pad, I think we can look at the pad.
Yeah, but I, I think there's more going on with center code.
Well, we can decide that.
Yeah, when we get there, after we complete this, but...
So, the Hartford property down there, that's separate code, would remain separate, the center town is separate.
Yeah.
And any future form-based codes we develop, they're all going to be separate, too. So, if there's one for Terrifield one day, I'm not looking forward, I don't know what the timeframe might be there, although I think it's a good idea. We could have, that could be more than the 120 pages we have proposed now for the, you know, the part of the town that's outside of those specialty areas.
Okay, the next thing is, we got a letter from Jimmy Chen, who would like an extension of the approval that we gave him for the property, which is now the 570, and remember to the south of it, there was a, another building that was taken down, and he got approval to put in another, to replace that with a, with a restaurant, and he still wants to keep that option, but his five years ran out. And he still wants to keep that option, but his five years ran out.
It hasn't run out yet.
It hasn't run out yet, he just wants to extend it to the full 10, so that, under the statute, you, the approvals are valid for five, could be extended to 10. He just wants to extend this out to 10, just because he's way out his option, he still is talking to me like he wants to come in to build something, but it doesn't sound like it's going to happen in the next two years. So we're probably three years out before he comes in with another building.
So he has two addresses in those, in that letter. Which two, where are those properties exactly?
So Table 570 is one, and then 560...
Is that between the liquor store and his existing building?
Yes.
Both of them are on that track between...
Yeah, so, so there's a grassed area that's, that's between, it's south of Table 570, north of Bennys and Liquor Store, that's 568, where there was supposed to be a restaurant proposed, and it's kind of, the building was going to be...
What was the setback, five feet? I mean, it couldn't have even been that much.
You have areas, it's the zoning board of appeals for, for that building.
It was a hardship.
Yeah, I'm sure. It's a hardship, and I have to sort of...
That's a parking garage.
Okay.
But I think we should make a motion to permit it, it was my feeling, you guys.
Yeah, do you have anything written there, so we can...
Do we have anything written?
You can just wing it.
Just, I make, yeah, because I don't even know what I'm making a motion about. Motion to extend the approval on...
Application 1449.
Application 1449, SPA, no, SPA, for the full 10 years, for additional five.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, six, nothing. All right, we have to appoint an EDC liaison.
What happened to our last one?
She went as Board of Select.
Oh, she's our liaison to the select.
Yes, I am.
She's graduated. So, this is one where somebody who is retired like Bruce would be a really good candidate.
Yeah, but isn't, when I look at this, maybe just whoever typed it didn't get it phrased right, but this is appointment of an EDC liaison to the zoning commission, not a zoning commission member to the EDC.
Oh, it's supposed to be zoning commission.
It's the other way around, we already got the other one.
Yeah.
He's your EDC liaison.
Yeah.
So he rounds Conner Park.
Anyway, are you amenable to that, Bruce?
I have to say, it's not that I'm not amenable, I'm amenable to doing additional service, but I really have no interest in that topic, so I beg off from that opportunity. I'm sure it'll be exciting for someone, but I'm not the right person.
Okay, we got, now...
No.
We've got Ann Erickson, who was new, and she's retired, maybe we should reserve this to our next meeting.
If I say yes to one more thing, my wife is going to divorce me.
I know that.
When do you meet?
When do they meet?
Fourth Wednesday of the month, yeah.
5:30, which would probably be tough for you.
At night, and it's tough for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a, I think we should hold off on that until, we'll see if maybe Ann can do it.
It's good, they're informative meetings, typically an hour, and the 5:30, I think, works, because then people can go to whatever meeting they might have at 7 o'clock that night, that's what's been happening. But you can certainly table it.
Yes, I think we'll table that. The work group for short-term rentals, who was interested in that?
Oh, that's Airbnb.
That's to set up...
Ordnance.
Ordnance.
I would nominate Bruce for that one.
I'd be willing to do that.
Okay.
He has the most interest.
Okay, then you've, you have researched several different places, but, no, I agree, I think you'd do a good job of it.
Thank you for stepping up.
Who's in charge in one of the meetings? Is that it?
You'll hear from the town, we'll, we will tell the town manager that you are the designee, and they will put you on the list of agenda distribution and so forth. So thank you for that, Bruce. You have an idea?
Are we ready?
I'm pretty well ready.
I move to adjourn. I'll second that.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, okay, Carrie, six, nothing, thank you.
We're gonna let Jackie do it.
She did the big, big...